Good evening, welcome to the 2019 East Hampton City Council Candidates Forum for Counselor at Large. My name is Jen Ramsey, the Executive Director of East Hampton Media. I'm going to give you the spiel one more time for those who were here for the last one. We're a nonprofit community media center that provides tools and trainings for those who would like to create non-commercial media such as TV shows, films, local event coverage, and podcasts. We also provide coverage of local government meetings and forums to help inform and engage the public. East Hampton Media runs three local TV channels in East Hampton: 191, 192, and 193. Tonight's forum was co-organized by East Hampton Media and the Greater Chamber of East Hampton. I want to thank all the candidates for coming tonight, the volunteers that we have, and the East Hampton Media Board of Directors, our Production Coordinator, Ryan Arnold, for running our live broadcast, and of course, our moderator and the audience for being here tonight. I'd like to introduce our moderator for the evening, Mo Beliveau, the Executive Director of Chamber of Greater East Hampton. She and the chamber serve as partners and a resource to their members, providing as many opportunities as possible to engage and experience success in the businesses. Thank you, Mo.
Good evening, and welcome to our candidates and to our audience this evening. I'll be running through the rules and format once again, and then we'll be getting started. So, the audience may submit written questions tonight. Volunteers will collect halfway through the forum, and they will be chosen at random and asked towards the end. Duplicate questions or any questions that are obscene, hostile, will be disregarded. Candidates will start with two-minute opening statements. We'll move on to the five predetermined questions. Each candidate will have two minutes to answer each question. One-minute candidate rebuttals are allowed only if a candidate refers to you in your name in their answer. Raise your hand, and the moderator will acknowledge you to speak. Timekeeper will hold up a 30-second sign, bing, and then the stop sign, bing, when the time is up.
Good job.
After the five predetermined questions, we'll ask as many audience questions as time allows. All candidates have a chance to answer each audience question in two minutes each. Two minutes each. We'll end with a two-minute closing statement and close the at-large forum around 8:30 PM. We used a randomizer to select the order of candidates to speak. Opening statements will start with Owen, then Laura, Bill, Peg, and Lindsay. Each question after will alternate. So, we will start with opening statements. And you took my questions.
Yeah.
All right, so let's start with our opening statements, and we're going to start with Owen.
Okay, I have a timer here. Thank you, East Hampton Media, for hosting. Thank you, fellow candidates, for running great campaigns and being really engaging. It's been a pleasure to be out there on the campaign trail with you. Thank you, residents of East Hampton, for being here and engaging in the process, and thank you, Mo, for moderating. My name's Owen Zarrett. I've been a resident of East Hampton here for almost 20 years. I'm a local medical provider. I work in orthopedics right over the mountain at a small community hospital, and I've been a proud member of the East Hampton City Council now for almost two years, serving on the Ordinance and Property Subcommittee. When I ran two years ago, that decision was catalyzed by an overwhelming pride for the city. And the dynamics have changed slightly. I've changed a little bit over the last two years, but the same catalytic reaction occurs today, and it's further augmented by the experience I've had serving on the City Council. As some of you know, much of the work I've done is focused around equity and diversity engagement in the city, and if elected to another term, I'd like to focus more on these items, as well as more green initiatives, affordability, and making sure our seniors can age in place here in the city. During my campaign, I've been fortunate to be recognized by the local carpenters 336, the College Democrats in Massachusetts, and the Bay State Stonewall Democrats, and I'm very honored to receive these endorsements. Checking my timer. My goal as an elected official has been to engage as many residents in the city as possible. I recognize the prevalence and the strength of social media. I've strove to use it as a tool for accessibility, transparency, and conversation. But the success of the city is an effort and a responsibility that falls on all of us, and I constantly seek to bring people together in conversations around the progress of East Hampton. But sometimes we disagree. But disagreement's okay. Constructive disagreement often leads to the best innovations. We need to take the swords of pointed fingers and beat them into the plowshares of open hands looking to connect, and I hope to do a lot more connecting in the next two years with all of you and the members of the City Council. Thank you.
Thank you.
Wow.
Laura.
Awesome. Yeah, thank you, East Hampton Media and the Chamber of Commerce for this forum, and for all of you who came to spend a Friday night here doing this. I appreciate it. My family moved here in 1995. We were looking for a community to raise our children, and also for a place that would give us some opportunity for financial, economic opportunity. We found that here in East Hampton. We became homeowner, we became landlords, and we've opened three businesses in the city of East Hampton, including our current business, Galaxy, that's right around the corner from here. Over the years, my husband and I have given to the community through fundraising, with food donations, and by hosting events. This isn't the first time I've run for City Council. Many years ago, I did jump into the ring, and I ran for precinct, too. While I didn't win, I focused on completing my education and my career. I worked my way through a bachelor degree and ended up receiving an MS in Nursing and Healthcare Administration, and my career as a registered nurse gave me the opportunity to hone many skills. As a bedside nurse, I learned the importance of listening to people and finding out what was most important to them. I also worked as an informatics nurse during major project management work, including the implementation of barcode scanning for medication safety and automatic medication dispensing machines on nursing units. I'm currently a nurse manager of a medical telemetry unit at Bay State Medical Center, managing a staff of over 50 employees and running a multimillion-dollar budget. I feel that all of these things have prepared me to run for City, to sit on City Council and give back to the city that has given so much to me and my family. It's important to me that we look at maintaining green spaces and playgrounds for families in East Hampton. We need to continue to explore options to ease the tax burdens on the elderly and continue to support the arts, something that has become part of our journey and our identity here in East Hampton. I do believe we could find a healthy balance between growth and supporting those things that make East Hampton great. I thank you for your consideration for election. This is an important time to be involved and to use your vote and your voice to positively impact this community that we all call home.
Bill.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, East Hampton Media, Jen, the Chamber, and Mo for doing this, the other candidates, the folks here tonight, as well as the ones that submitted the questions. My name is Bill Lynch. I'm currently a City Councilor, running for reelection. Born and raised in East Hampton. I turned 38 two days ago, so I've lived here for 38 years. I'm proud of it, in two days, yes. I have a wife, Stacy. Billy V is five, and Harrison I is one, so it's kind of weird that that was able to play in a part, too. We just bought a house in Precinct V. When we were looking, we didn't want to live anywhere else. You know, like I said, I lived here my whole life, and my wife fell in love with it when she moved in with me, and we've decided to stay and raise our family in this beautiful community. Why am I running? Well, that's part of it, but I also want to make sure that our tax dollars are spent in the right areas. I bring business background to the table, and really, I have the ability to analyze numbers, and I showed it the last budget season, where I really, like, ask questions on every line, and I'm kind of an annoyance in the department head's backs. I need to know why. So, and I also want to make sure that we look out for our workers, the ones that protect our kids and our families, the ones that take care of our roads and our parks, and the teachers in this great community. I'm also here to listen to all the residents. I ask questions. I'm also a voice for the folks that don't have that voice, maybe too shy to ask a question at a meeting, or don't have the time to attend the meetings. I'm able to be that voice for them regardless of how I feel on their opinions. So, I bring that to the table. I'm a likable guy, and I would like your vote. Thank you.
Wow, I don't think I can.
You don't.
That's tough to follow.
You can do it.
Thank you, East Hampton Media. Thank you, Jen. Thank you, East Hampton Chamber of Commerce, Mo. I want to be fully transparent that I am on the Board of Directors of East Hampton Media, as is Bill.
I am, too.
And I can say for myself, I don't know about Bill, but I can say I had zero intel on these questions, because, trust me, we would have had much easier questions if I was involved. My name is Peg Coniff, and I am on the cusp of retiring after 30 years at a Fortune 6 healthcare company. Look it up, you can figure it out. I've been on the City Council for four years, and in that time, I've been witness to some incredible improvements and positive change in the city. I've also been present during some very challenging conversations. Although I am considered a newcomer, having lived here only eight years, one thing that I share with all of you is my love for this city. East Hampton is more than the occasional rift over whether we should allow a pedal bike on the rail trail. It's more than restaurants and artists and Food Truck Fridays, although if you talk to Owen, there's nothing more than Food Truck Fridays. It's more than Facebook debates about nothing and everything. East Hampton is a collection of people who feel passionately about the city they call home. It is the responsibility of those of us elected to City Council to look across our community and help to make the safety and well-being of everyone our priority. We're obligated to ensure that the city is on stable footing for future generations. As your representative, I will work to ensure that we find ways to reduce the tax burden for our seniors, to ensure that affordable housing is a priority, and that zoning barriers are reviewed and inclusionary housing is promoted. I look forward to opportunities to creatively expand our tax base to help fund these important and necessary initiatives. Thank you for coming tonight. I look forward to serving as your City Council at Large for the next two years. Thank you.
Mo, you said I could rebut if my name was mentioned.
Sorry?
I just want the community to know that tonight is the last Food Truck Friday, and that my priorities sit firmly with the City Council, and so I'm here. Thank you.
It's Lindsay's turn.
All right. Lindsay, you're up.
Okay. Thank you, East Hampton Media, and thank you, the Chamber of Commerce. My name is Lindsay Rothschild, and I'm running for City Council at Large. I'll be number five on the ballot on November 5th. Five on 5th, anyways. I was, I've been an educator for 20 years. I taught English as a second language to adult learners in a variety of settings. I've worked with refugees, immigrants, and just second-language learners in our community from Puerto Rico that are not. And I've also been an instructional designer, which is someone who works with technology-mediated education to help make it more accessible to a range of learners, including people with disabilities and people of all ages, including language learners. I worked at HCC for the last 10 years, and I left that job and made a move into real estate to get more involved in this community. After 10 years of living here and being involved in the East Hampton pre-K through 12, pre-K through A, sorry, school campaign, and being involved in the, the, sorry, I'm having a hard day. Really, anyway. So, as an educator for 20 years, I've been very focused on student-centered instruction, and so in terms of my campaign, that's how I've run my campaign. I've had four different house parties. The first one was on cycling and pedestrian safety in the city. The second one was on open spaces and preserving them, and the third one was on envisioning a 21st-century library, and the fourth one was on aging in East Hampton. All of those different house parties, I invited someone of knowledge on the subject and invited community members. Each house party had different groupies of people, which was really exciting to me, that I got to meet different groups of people at each one where those issues were important. And so, by bringing knowledge holders to the table and being able to participate in the conversation, I got to really get a feeling for nuanced feelings of community members.
Time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we're going to get right into our questions. Number one question, and Laura, we'll start with you.
Okay.
Okay. Between East Hampton Futures and Plan Downtown and all of the ideas that have come up out of these citywide planning projects, the community is bound to see big changes coming to the fabric of East Hampton. As City Councilor, what role do you see yourself playing in directing these changes, and what actions would you hope to take related to zoning, licensing, or the like to prioritize which entities and individuals ultimately benefit these impending opportunities?
Thank you. So, we do have big changes coming to our city. The question of what to do with the Center, Pepper, and Maple Schools is actually the reason I chose to run for City Council. I really want to have a voice in the decisions that are made around those properties, and I want to have with one goal, that we make decisions about those buildings that we can be proud of 30 years from now. We can do that by listening to the feedback from citizens, especially those who participated in the East Hampton Downtown planning projects, and ensure that these ideas are heavily weighed in the request for proposal for development of these buildings. We'll need to carefully weigh the need for revenue from these buildings, both from the sale of the building and from the tax that we can get from them and future taxes. We have to weigh that against the needs of our city, and that's a really tough balance. I think my experience over the years has helped me be able to evaluate this sort of thing and feed into that weighing. Our senior center, which provides so much, does deserve a more accessible and modern space. The youth of East Hampton and many others would benefit from an updated community center with an artic workspace. These buildings could offer the beginning of a solution to our affordable housing needs. As a City Council member, I will always keep these things in mind and use them as guiding principles when I'm making decisions.
Thank you. Bill.
Same question?
Yes, sir.
All right. As a counselor, our role is to listen to the community. I was able to attend one of the meetings that, on the project planning, and it's very interesting, and I heard a lot of great ideas. And, you know, Laura spit out a couple of them, you know, with the senior center. I think it's definitely a great opportunity to use centers, anywhere to parking, which we need downtown. But whatever the decision is and whatever we come to a conclusion on, it needs to be reviewed thoroughly. For an example, Omar, you live right next to Center and Pepper. If we need to move a telephone pole, that could go in the middle of your driveway if it's not paid attention to, and we have to approve telephone pole locations, and that's a simple part of the job. But if it gets overlooked, people's lives could be ruined, one simple thing. So, really, we need to pay attention to that. Zoning can be, if it's wrong and not thoroughly vetted, it can be a detriment to the future of the city, and anybody that can look into it can make a decision in another part of town just because of a simple zoning change. So, we have to be very careful on what we do when we decide to do it. I think everything that we need to do, we need to include the entire community, and we need to include all the department heads that are relevant to the situation. And whatever the project is, moving forward, we can't rubber stamp anything. We need to look at everything thoroughly, and one project could impact the future of the city, but we have a lot of options and opportunities that could benefit the community. Thank you.
Peg.
The role of City Councilor at any of these initiatives is to thoughtfully ensure that barriers to progress have been removed. The ideas that have come out of the various planning sessions are thoughtful and creative. My focus will be to ensure that as we evolve and move forward, that we keep this in mind, that housing inventory in East Hampton is very limited, which in turn is driving prices up and making it difficult and worrisome for our most vulnerable residents to remain in East Hampton. We need to ensure that any potential new developments include housing, and that we make it advantageous to developers to build affordable housing. We need to look at our zoning ordinances to determine if there are changes to be made for accessory housing or smaller houses, look at smaller lot sizes, different frontage requirements. All of it needs to be on the table. And as a City Councilor, I will challenge the status quo on how we look at these things going forward. We must also be thoughtful about how we do any development, because as we know, we have very little open space in our city. In 2010, East Hampton ranked 11 out of 43 West communities in population, but near the bottom in land area. We have some lots that are enormous in size. If we are being creative, we need to be open to some areas having a bit denser housing in order to ensure that existing housing prices and apartment rents do not continue to climb to levels that make it difficult or impossible for those residents who grew up here to afford to stay here.
Thank you, Lindsay.
Thank you. I participated in both the East Hampton Futures and the Downtown Strategic Planning, and I think that the strategies and the priorities that we have are going to come out of those participatory processes. I think the city has been great, and it has a history of participatory process, looking back at the master plan of 2008. When reading over that, you see a lot of those themes are, there's a through line from there to now. It's been an iterative process. I think when we hear the residents speaking, we hear people talking about diverse uses for spaces that all ages can use. We hear people talking about preserving open spaces, sustainable development, and when we look at all those different things, we look at affordability, age-friendly, and equitable. One of the things I heard a lot at both the Futures and the Downtown Strategic Plan, planning meeting, was having a space that could be a maker's space, could be a place for artists to work, could be intergenerational learning space. To me, that's a 21st-century library. I think our city deserves a library that reflects the growth of our city, and a lot of the purposes that people are looking for would fit under that type of organization. I think that since we have these processes, we also have to look at who's not at the table. A lot of people are participating and showing up, but who's not showing up, and why is that? And it doesn't mean that people aren't interested. It might mean that people don't feel invited to the table, so I think we really need to be, to keep things equitable and to keep all of our residents in mind. We have to think about who's not at the table and reach out to them. Thank you.
Thank you. Owen?
You know, one of the things about East Hampton Futures and Plan Downtown is I really feel like it's a culmination of some of the very exciting things that are happening, and seeing the community work together with everyone's voices heard in terms of the input and how we're going to develop our city. Currently, I'm a member of both Ordinance and Property Subcommittee, and both of these projects being extremely exciting. I'm hoping if I'm reelected that I continue to sit in these committees and play a role, particularly in property, where I've asked for and pursued an agenda to inventory our city property. We are somewhat parcel poor in terms of what we can do, and when we talk about all these projects, we need to find places to put them. Issues that particularly come to mind right now, especially as I drive down Cottage Street, are parking, making sure that we're maintaining green spaces, that we're not paving paradise to put up a parking lot, and housing, and that's housing that's affordable. We need to take a serious look at our zoning around accessory apartments and accessory structures. As people feel priced out of the city, we need to explore options so that families and friends can share property and feel like they can afford to stay here. We need to get back to encouraging nuclear families, and not in the way they power their homes, but families that stick together, just to clarify. I think all of us here probably have similar goals. We express them differently. Where I see myself most definitely playing a role is listening to the committees, the planner, the mayor, and the consultants about what they think. To borrow somewhat a quote from Bones McCoy, "I'm a medical provider, not a city planner." And my job is to make sure that the people with the expertise, training, and specialty get their vision to work. I see my role as a connector, facilitator, and someone who continues to let the city know what's happening so that we continue to have the input on these projects together.
Thank you. One of the topics raised multiple times in community feedback received was the need for more affordable housing and rent-controlled properties, which have also come up repeatedly during the projects mentioned in our first question. What place do you think affordable housing units should have in these revitalization efforts as opposed to, say, mixed-use buildings? And how do you propose we balance the needs of our disenfranchised neighbors alongside efforts to capitalize on new economic opportunities? And Bill will start with you.
Thank you. I think we need to find out what the obvious outcome is from our planning and everything that we're working on right now, and that would be, you know, the answer. We need more affordable housing. It's a no-brainer. It's on everybody's plate. How can we get there? Which building is the best one for us to use? Is it Maple Street? Is it Pepper and Center? You know, those are the conversations we need to have. How can we afford it with CPA funding? You know, can we use that to help us out, offset some of the costs? You know, we have options there that we can look into to help fund the projects. The disenfranchised folks, I think, you know, rent-controlled properties, that's a conversation that I've had with some residents. I think it's a very interesting proposal, and I think we have a lot to learn and a lot more that we can look into that. I definitely think that's an opportunity that we can look at for moving forward in there. Mixed-use buildings, I definitely think we still should have those in the city. One Ferry Street, you know, we need the economic development. We need to make sure that we have those balances, but anything that we do with one of the schools, I don't think has the ability to be a mixed-use building. They're one or the other. We need to not try to jumble that up and combine two things in one. Those buildings aren't made for that, in my opinion. But I think we need to see what the final outcome is, how we can help, what CPA money is we could use to help offset some of the costs, and go from there and work together. Thank you.
Thank you. Peg.
Hi. As I mentioned earlier, affordable housing is an absolute priority for the city, as well as for me as a City Councilor. But keep in mind that when we talk about affordable housing, the city is not going to be the developer. The city is going to make the environment for a developer to come in and be successful in a venture that includes affordable housing. So, while we are not going to be the ones that are putting up the structures, we have to create that framework for them, and that can be done through 40B zoning, other tools that make it desirable for a developer, and the ability for them to be successful. Right now, when we talk about the planning that was done several years ago around housing, we had a 10% goal of all housing would be affordable. We're right around 7%, I think, right now. And in 2015, the Department of Housing and Community Development approved our housing production plan. At the time, the five-year plan, which started four and a half years ago, required that we have 38 new units a year for affordable to low- and moderate-income houses. We're a little behind on that, and the five-year plan expires next year. So, I don't think the development, and I also, I don't think the development of affordable housing needs necessarily to be at the exclusion of mixed-use housing. I don't ever like to look at things as either this or that. Let's consider both. Let's do the right thing for the property owners, the developers, our neighborhoods, and for the city. And if you would like any more information on this, there is a ton of information at the East Hampton Affordable and Fair Housing Partnership, and please go there if you have any questions about how we can move forward with this plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Lindsay.
Thank you. So, what I've learned as I've been campaigning and talking to folks is that this is a really, this is really important to people, and this is really important to me, it's really important to our city. It's also a really difficult topic. There's no easy answers. I've talked to people who work on housing, and they don't have the answer. So, I do see the will of the City Council and the mayor and our current players in the city to work on this issue, so that's heartening right there. I think that we need to work with partners, with the CDC, with Wayfinders. At my Aging in East Hampton meeting, a group came out and talked about affordable housing built for seniors. That's resident-managed. It's a model where they come in and bring all the funding, and the residents are managed so that there's autonomy and agency, and so that's also another model we can look at. So, this is something we need to partner with groups that do this type of work. We also have to...
Incentivize the developers.
This isn't going to go, you know, we're not going to have a goodwill developer come in and just want to do it. But we're a city where people want to come, so we have some leverage, and I think we need to lead with our values, and that's the real question here. What are our values? And I've heard loud and clear from residents that affordable housing is important. I believe it's important, and I think with the great minds at the table and the will, we can, we will make it happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're all familiar with how popular East Hampton is becoming. As East Hampton becomes more popular, we're going to continue to see soaring prices in single-family homes. And with that, the current realistic concern that traditional single-family homes are creating socioeconomic disparity and gentrification in East Hampton. So, our goal must be to attempt to preserve the diversity of the city through housing development. Our current goal should focus on what my colleague said, workforce housing, traditional affordable housing, and senior housing. And I agree, we do need to preserve mixed-use spaces. Those have become part of the flavor and the spirit of the city. If you want to live in East Hampton, you should have access to housing that allows you to have money left over after your housing payments, so you can enjoy all the amenities that the city has to offer. You shouldn't have to miss out on Mill Pond Live or Cultural Chaos or Food Truck Friday because you have to work multiple jobs to live here. We also have to look at zoning and housing projects that prioritize our artisans. Our art has become the heart of East Hampton, and we have to think about live-work space for our artisans. I think about my friend Jane Hamill, formerly of Goat Peak Strings, and now of Jane Hamill Luthery, who has set up a wonderful space for herself where she can live and have her shop. But I'd like to see more intentional zoning and more intentional policy and more intentional development to create spaces in our housing projects so that we can continue to celebrate the art and the artisans of East Hampton and see things like live-work spaces in East Hampton. Thanks.
So, as I stated earlier, I think the development of the Center, Pepper, and Maple Schools do offer us an opportunity to help us with affordable housing units, but I'd say that[1788.78] But I'd say that it's not really the entire solution. I think we do, I think the larger challenge that we face is exploring all these other options and also doing it in a way that's palatable to the people that are in the surrounding areas. If we want our elders to age in place in their homes, for example, could we fight supportive funds that would enable elders to subdivide their homes, creating two smaller footprints of an apartment and then an apartment that they could rent out to make income for themselves? But when we do that, we're going to be affecting the neighborhood. And we have to make that, we have to understand that we're not going to do this without affecting all of us. If we truly want to have affordable housing, we all have to be willing to maybe give up a little bit or maybe celebrate the change that's going to happen and not look at it as, oh, now I have an apartment in my neighborhood, but to look at it as saying, I have a new neighbor and that I have someone who might be an artist or might be someone who works in a kitchen, like at a restaurant like mine, and is able to afford to work here and live here. That's something that we struggle with. You know, we have employees who struggle with being able to live here close to where they work. And in the wintertime, we worry that those people that live 45 minutes away. You know, we'd prefer that they're here. So actually, it's a safety issue as well. So if we as a community are committed to affordable housing, we need to learn to embrace these changes. As city councillor, I would look for creative ways to increase affordable housing that promotes a sense of community and supports our elderly population.
Thank you. During this past term, there have been many issues brought to the council that speak to one basic shared, one basic need shared by all people, to feel safe. For example, recent resolutions from the city council have touched on issues like discrimination, gun violence, and reproductive freedom, to name a few. Some argue, though, that these broad statements from the council do little to affect, directly affect the lives of the people living in East Hampton. Do you agree? During this next term, what would you hope to accomplish as councillor, either by supporting initiatives, enacting legislation, or the like, that could directly impact the lives of individuals who may still question how safe or supported they feel living in our community? And Peg, we'll start with you.
Really? We have done a number of resolutions in the last year or so and, you know, I strongly believe that resolutions are, do act as methods of propagating information. They are a representation of the collective views and ideologies of this body and they're used sometimes to influence other legislation, either at a state or federal level. So they have a place. I do agree, though, that there sometimes is too much focus on resolutions, which takes away time from the council spending time on issues that directly impact the residents of East Hampton. I am in favor of limiting the resolutions. We as a body address, however, I'm not in favor of putting parameters around what that means, either through creating limits on how many resolutions we present or the type and the kind. That will be up to the city council president, individual councillors, and city council committees to determine how much time we spend on these things. I am most interested in how we can impact the people who live in this community. To that end, and as a direct result of city council action, the East Hampton Community Relations Committee was established. At that committee, as that committee works to establish its own procedures and committee charter, we can expect this will be another tool in our tool belt for ensuring that neighborhoods and residents are safe and that conversation can replace conflict. In another example, the city council working, is how we're working to keep everyone safer, this past summer councillor Gomez and I co-authored the Welcoming Community Ordinance that ensures that undocumented immigrants will not be treated differently because of their status. And so by doing this, we as a community become safer. We know that if you are undocumented and you're the victim of a crime or you witness a crime, you can feel free to report that crime and not worry that something untoward is going to happen to you. And by doing that, we all become safer.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I can say that I moved here with my wife in 2009 to start a family and it was because we felt safe here. As a same-sex couple, this felt like a safe place to do that and that is not true of every community in our country. I think that the resolutions are important. I think that it's part of a larger political ecosystem and that it's a way of saying to our representatives, especially when there's bills in the state legislature, that this is something that's important to this city. The representatives need that support when they're supporting bills and going forward. I also think when those bills, when those resolutions speak to people's experiences in our city, those people feel seen and supported by their city, which does affect, does affect residents here. However, that's just part of the large ecosystem in the landscape. The other part is making sure that there's ordinances and initiatives here that make people feel safe. When the incidences at the high school happened and with the attorney general and the incidence of ongoing bias at the high school, that brought a lot of concern to me and I joined the principal search to help get involved in making sure we have a new principal in town that's going to be able to address these issues head-on. And also, I joined Equity Steering Committee to help be involved in that. There's also, there's also, how do things affect people? And I'm thinking about the trans rights local resolution and then I'm wondering to myself, and I need, and this is part of the listening and making sure people are at the table. We can say this resolution, but do trans members feel comfortable in our community? Are there, there's not enough non-gendered bathrooms in our community. There may not be education and awareness of, of, education and awareness of what people that are trans and non-binary are experiencing. And so I just feel like we have to take it another step forward with all issues. Sorry.
Thank you. Owen?
As someone who's brought forward a few of these resolutions and maybe another one the way, I might be a little biased about my view here. You know, being an elected official, I think, as one of my colleagues touched upon, is a multifaceted experience. You need to have a balance of legislation, engagement, advocacy, just to name a few things. If our entire work was to just deliberate ordinance or make financial allocations, we'd feel, we'd be very one-dimensional and I think we'd fall very short of our obligation to the voters. So when we took a stand on a new school and resolved to protect transgender people and resolved to preserve reproductive freedom, we provide a character to the East Hampton City Council and to some degree, I think, also to the city of East Hampton. I believe we gave people in the city courage to stand up for important issues. And sometimes also, these non-binding resolutions are preambles to more binding resolution. It's a way to kind of get our foot in the door. When the mayor, in support of East Hampton Pride, offered a proclamation to raise the rainbow flag over the 50-Pason, we gave voices to the voiceless. Resolutions paint the color of a city that can otherwise just appear black and white when viewed strictly through the lens of zoning and ordinance. But I agree, we have to be careful about what we choose to support and when and that there's some relevance to state and federal legislation that we're supporting. So we don't want to dilute the power of our voices. But I see this as one of our many duties and one that I'm going to continue to execute thoughtfully. Thank you.
I applaud the work that was done by the city council for passing many, many amendments. When you look at the amendments, there's the firearm safety against gun violence, the resolution against the abuse of migrant children, the resolution calling for the US to join the Treaty on the Prohibition of Nuclear Weapons, and the resolution affirming and demonstrating East Hampton's commitment to reproductive freedom and the right to safe and legal abortion. I also applaud the passing of the Welcoming Community Trust Ordinance, which encourages increased safety for all of us. This ordinance encourages everyone to seek assistance to the police when they're a victim of a crime, regardless of their immigration status. I would hate to think of anyone who was assaulted and was fearful of going to the police for protection. I would also hate to think of the person who assaulted them not being held accountable. So by having this resolution, we're actually, like as Peg was saying, it's making everyone safer. So passing an ordinance or a resolution may not appear to have a direct effect on people, but I really believe it does. So the example that I just gave, I think, does increase the safety of our city. But it also sets a tone for what East Hampton stands for. Resolutions help to shape a supportive framework for those who may not have a voice or are feeling unsafe. These ordinance and resolutions are much like a mission statement for the city. At our restaurant, we have a mission statement that says, "We want to create an experience that everyone looks forward to coming back to." And when we make decisions in the restaurant, we always look to that to see if we're following our mission, if we're staying on course. And when we make a resolution in a city, that's exactly what we do. Every decision that we make, we should look to these resolutions and make sure that we're being true to those statements that we made. So I think resolutions are still very important and I do think they're impactful.
All right. Thank you. The first part of the question, do I feel resolutions hold any grounds? Yes, I do. I think that, you know, like Peg said, there should be a limit as to how many we do. I think we really got aggressive with the resolutions last year, but rightfully so. And I stood by every single one that I voted in favor of. I think it speaks for our community, shows the state and federal governments where our city stands, where our city government stands on a lot of those issues. The second part of that question is what are my goals next year for ordinances or anything that I want to bring to the table? And one thing that I do is I want to look at how we can financially grow our money, our baseline, without taxing the residents. I think it's very important to review ordinances and I want to sit down with the chief of police and see if we can do something, you know, and increase violations and ordinances in the city and generate funds for our community that aren't currently there. And the other thing I want to look into is the pilot program, payment in lieu of taxes, and try to see if we can generate some funds for our community to help fund the ideas that we have moving forward. I think there's a lot of opportunity with that without raising money, without raising taxes and generate those funds. There are options out there and I think that that's one of the things that I want to look into with my next term. Thank you.
Now, we're conscious of the fact that you participated in a forum focused entirely on our planet's climate crisis and yet it remains one of the issues we really, really can't talk about enough. As we face down a future of extreme and unpredictable weather patterns and the subsequent ramification that are likely to be faced here at home, who or what in East Hampton do you see as the most vulnerable to these changes? As councillor, how do you intend to help East Hampton prepare for this future and what actions would you take to ensure the protection of who you consider the most vulnerable? Lindsay?
I think the most vulnerable are the people who are always the most vulnerable. It's people with limited income, it's elderly people, it's people with disabilities, it's people who have limited English proficiency, and it's our kids who are going to be left here with this planet when we're gone. So I think, looking at the, I think our city's done a lot of great work on climate change. We've taken, we've participated in the MVP survey. We've looked at, the mayor's talked about increasing electric and hybrid cars to our fleets. We're relooking maybe at our solar bylaws. But can we do more? Do we need to do more? Yes. We're at risk for flooding, our water supply we need to protect. But I think most importantly, we need as a city, I would advocate for strategic planning around climate change specifically, where we come up with goals to reduce our carbon emissions as a city. And I feel that, we talked earlier about we need to educate kids about this. I feel kids are educating us about this. Kids seem to have a natural understanding of this because it, my seven-year-old, he is lecturing me on climate change. So I think they need to be at the table and we need to come up with goals for the city and backwards design those with strategic action plans that we're all aware of and all on board with. That include green infrastructure, that include solar, that include bans or restrictions on single-use plastics. So that's my.
Thank you. Owen?
So who's going to be the most vulnerable? It's going to be our most financially fragile residents. When we look at times of extreme weather conditions, times of extreme cold or times of extreme heat are most likely to affect these populations the worst. We need to think about how we're going to be prepared for these times, especially with more variable weather patterns. So heating and cooling centers during these situations and power outages, that tend to affect people who are financially vulnerable more. Our natural infrastructure is also very vulnerable to extreme weather events, as we saw with the microburst up on the mountain. And East Street and Route 5, which is a main corridor into our city, is extremely vulnerable to flooding due to its proximity to the river. And speaking of water and our water supply, we need to think about what we're putting in the ground. So we need to be really thoughtful about the pesticides and what's being sprayed in the city and look at ordinance to control those. The city has been involved with discussing disaster preparedness and I was fortunate to attend the workshop for the MVP program, which addressed some of these things. But we need to continue to be more forward-thinking. Oddly enough, variable weather patterns will affect our streets. People already complain about the potholes enough as it is. But potholes are the product of freeze and thaw cycles and as we see more extreme and more variable weather and temperature patterns, we're going to, we are likely to see more freeze-thaw cycles during the winter, which should certainly affect our roads, which seem to be one of the number-one priorities of people in the city right now. Ultimately, what we do need to do is combat the source and as other people has mentioned, we need to reduce our dependability on fossil fuels. We need policies to reduce our carbon emissions and in doing so, reduce our contribution to the cause of the climate crisis. So we need to figure out how to increase more municipal solar, make solar more affordable to the people who want to bring it in, and continue to stock our fleet of cars with carbon-neutral options. Thank you.
So I agree that climate crisis is really important. I also recognize how complicated it is. I appreciate everything the city's done and we've done a really good job. And we can step back and be proud that we are a green city. That's something that a lot of people haven't been able to achieve. But I also know that for big changes to our environment, it's more that a city councillor can really have a huge impact on. We still need to do what we can do in this city, but we need to recognize how complex it is. And so we have to look to our state representatives and follow the guidance and leadership of them so they can help us, help the federal government guide these very large questions. So we need to do the things we do here in East Hampton, but we also have to do it realistically and recognize that it, to have a large impact, we have to also look to our federal government and our state government. For example, all the recycling that we do, you put it on the edge, you put it at the end of your driveway and a lot of that recycling just goes into the, goes into the waste anyways. You know, it's no longer being recycled. You know, recycle, we haven't built a new recycling plant in this country in years and years and years. So it's, it's a bigger picture for us. So I, like I said, support our state government as well. If we really want to have a true impact on the most vulnerable in our city, then we should instead focus, also focus on developing better tools and systems to deal with issues such as racism and gender bias. As a city councillor, we can provide actionable steps and guidance to navigate these difficult questions and work towards a more equitable framework of our city government. This can include citywide workshops, encouraging our law enforcement and city officials to participate in trainings, engaging with marginalized groups and understanding what they need to not only feel safe in our city, but to ensure that they can also make East Hampton their home. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Weather patterns are changing daily. We see it and Owen hit on it with the freeze and thaw cycles. And some of our most vulnerable residents are the elderly and are the financially hurt folks that are in our community. And then compile that with the seniors who live on fixed incomes, who can't get an overtime shift to increase their wealth and everything else and they're stuck in a house. I think we need to look at what we can do to help listen to those residents, reaching out to Brandon, who oversees the senior center, and talk to him and see what his folks are saying around the senior center and how we can help, you know? Is it, is it easy enough to, you know, have a group of volunteers go out and shovel driveways so the folks can get out and get their food and do that, you know, for, for the community that's in need? And then, and then the second part is our children, right? So we need this planet for them to continue, the next generations. If we don't do something now, we don't change our ways, we're not going to have a planet to hand over to the next generation. So I think it's important to look at that, educate them, you know? Lindsay mentioned it, you know, our seven-year-old is pretty fluent on it and Billy's been working on it as well. So I think, I think it's very important to educate them and looking at what options we have. We have all these buildings, municipal buildings, municipal parking lots. Let's throw some solar panels on them and help generate some electricity for our own community that we can use. And if we pass a municipal light plant, then maybe that's another option that we can start looking into some of these other avenues in the future, but it can be a conversation. But I definitely think solar should be on our, right, right on our front doorstep here where we can talk and look at utilizing all the space that we have for our benefit and to lower our carbon footprint. All right. Thank you.
There's probably zero chance that in two minutes I can do anything coherent about climate change, but I'll give it a go. So I think our most vulnerable folks are the elderly and the kids. The elderly, from a health perspective, I think the air that we're breathing is problematic and it creates a lot of lung issues. And I think that then translates into the buildings that we build and those have to be made in a way that there is not any mold growing and things of that nature. But I think we really have to focus on, on the kids and the next gen- But I think we really have to focus on the kids and the next generation coming along. The planet is not ours. It's, we're just here, but it's not, we don't own it. And so we have to be able to hand it off to the next generation, and we can't ignore what, as a friend of mine would say, what our eyeballs in our head are showing us and that science is telling us, that we are doomed to a lifetime of potential health issues and homes that are vulnerable to fires, floods, and hurricanes if we don't do something. And as a city council, we can certainly enact ordinances that can affect change in the city. We can create ordinances and have the direct city vehicles to be fueled in a certain way. We can restrict plastic in the commercial businesses in town. We can move to convert our own city buildings to more renewable energy sources. We can do all of these things. But we're fooling ourselves if we think we can do this without incurring costs. And there will be costs. And so, I think, in the ways that we've worked in the past with the master plan and in the housing planning, much as Lindsay said, we need to have a plan and execute the plan over time and take things in incremental action steps, as opposed to looking at this enormous problem as one thing that we have to solve. We have to solve a lot of little things, and I think we can do that if we have a plan.
There are four ballot questions included in this local election cycle with strong opinions on both sides. Of the four, is there a particular question you feel strongly in favor of, and why do you believe it will be a benefit to East Hampton if passed? Are there any questions you are concerned about if they were to pass? If so, what is that concern, what is it that concerns you? Owen?
So, of all the questions, this is the one I actually didn't write an answer down for, because I probably struggled with the answer to this up until right now. I'll tell you about the one I'm concerned about the most, that's ranked choice voting. And the reason I'm concerned about it is because it's going to make our elections so much more engaging and so many more people involved, I don't know what we're going to do with all these candidates. You know, I support all four of the ballot questions. I obviously feel very strongly about ranked choice voting. I think it's going to be great for our city. And ultimately, if it's passed, I'd like to see it move on to multi-member races, if that's more complicated. Out of all of them, though, I think the one that will impact our city the most is the proposal for a municipal light plant. Right now, that was brought about because of some of the great work of our telecom committee and my colleague Tom Peak. His name keeps popping up a lot tonight. You know, we all exist in, under the monopoly and under the thumb of charter, with terrible service constantly that we can't get out from under and there's no other options. And what better way to throw off the shackles of corporate monopoly and corporate greed than to give ourselves an option, which could be municipal broadband? But as was mentioned earlier also, a municipal light plant doesn't, we don't have to do anything if you have a municipal light plant, it just gives us options. And one of the many other options is municipal solar. We can make ourselves energy independent. We can protect ourselves from things like power outages by using storage batteries and such. There's other things that we can look into, but this opens up a whole new era for East Hampton, a whole new opportunity for us to be independent and self-sufficient.
So I support all four of the ballot questions, and I actually found, I too had a very hard time thinking to myself, which one is really, is my heart speaking to the most? What I really think would have the greatest impact on the city and is most important to me is the, having a mayor here for four years. I recently actually took over a new nursing unit, and just the amount of time it took me to learn people's names, just the amount of stress it caused to learn the different protocols, learn the different rules and all those things, that's time that I'm not actually actively working. And I think about the job of a mayor, I can't imagine, I can't imagine what that time is like to get your feet on the ground, so to speak, to sort of actually get working and get moving. I also think about, the job of the mayor is about building relationships and planning for the future. All the great things we see that's happening in our city, that was starting to plan years ago. You know, we get grant money, you know, we look for ways to pay for things, you know, these things happen over a long period of time. And a two-year term, I just really don't think is as beneficial as a four-year term for building those relationships and putting those plans into place. There's also a practical side to this, that if we want people to run for mayor, it's a two-year term. So say I wanted to run for mayor one day, I don't, but what if I did? I'd have to give up my career so that I could run for mayor to do this for two years. That's a big, that's a big ask. You know what I'm saying? So to be able to have more people step forward and actually try to run for mayor, we have to be able to give them a four-year, a four-year term so that they can actually plan for their lives. Yeah, so I think it's a leap of faith when someone runs for mayor, and I think that we have to like support that leap of faith with the four-year term, so.
Thank you. Of the four questions, I'm probably most in favor of the municipal light plant. I think Owen hit it on the head. You know, it gives us nothing right now financially, but it gives us the ability to, in the future, have a telecom option, fiber optics, the ability to have a municipal light plant where we can have generated power, whether it be solar, wind, water, whatever it is, and provide jobs for our community and really have better rates, more competitive rates for our community and hopefully better service. And that's just in the future, but this would allow the discussions to begin. The only question that concerns me is actually the four-year term for mayor. Yes, I think it would be easier for them to work, and the concern that I would have would be the ability for them to maybe not like a city councillor, that they might campaign against, you know? If they don't have to campaign for themselves, they might be able to campaign against somebody, you know, if they have an agitator or something else. You know, I challenged the mayor's budget a lot this past cycle, and I'm not saying that she has it out for me, but if she did and she didn't need to run her own campaign, she could actually technically campaign and put somebody in a spot that might rubber-stamp her budget next term. That would be the only concern I have. And, you know, I think I definitely agree that it would be a benefit for somebody, anybody, to not need to campaign, because you could get your feet ground running and really go four years. But that would be the only downside I would see to that four-year term. Thank you.
So I also am in favor of all of the ballot initiatives. And so I guess if we're going to pick one that I think is most impactful, I would go with the four-year mayor term. And the reason for that is I, we kind of witnessed this term, the ramp-up that it took for a new mayor. We've been fortunate for the past, I don't even know how many years, 30 years maybe, since we incorporated as a city, to have first a mayor who was here for a long, long time, and then the next mayor who had worked with that mayor for a long, long time. So we had continuity right up until this last election. And so, everyone thought this was a no-brainer. It's easy, two years, you just roll them over and you keep going and everything's fine. But now that we are in an environment where we have new people coming to the plate and new people who want to participate in government in the city, that, to what Laura said, that's a big ask of someone to give up their career, to campaign and to give up their career for a two-year term, and then to campaign again. It takes money, it takes time, it takes time away from the running of the city to campaign, and I don't see it as necessary. I think a four-year term is completely reasonable, and the concerns of councillor Lynch, I don't share. I don't think that that's a problem that we would need to, there's so many checks and balances and so many things that would have to happen before somebody could be gunning for you, that I'm not too concerned about that. But I really do, it really hit me, this term, watching someone have to ramp up, immediately start budget processing, work through that, continue, and, you know, I'll be honest, I think she's done a great job, and continuing to do that. And then, had she had an opponent, she'd be right back into the campaigning, and that's just not helpful.
Thank you. You would like to make a rebuttal?
I just want to rebuttal because she said my name.
I don't think I did.
It's the first time my name was said all night.
Be nice.
I'm going to be nice. My rebuttal to that is, you know, I think that Nicole has done a great job, and I definitely think that, you know, not needing to campaign, she's able to focus on the city, and I wholeheartedly agree with that. My concern, and the only thing was, was that we were asked if we had any concerns, and that's my only concern. I definitely see the benefits of having a four-year term, the attraction that it pulls to local communities, existing North Hamptons four-year and everything else. I just think that it could potentially put that power on an already powerful mayoral form of government another step. It might just give her another benefit. That's all I'm saying. And I thank you for throwing it and having a disagreement civilly. I still like you, Peg. Thank you.
Lindsay?
I support all the ballot issues as well, and I could choose any of them to speak about, but I think what I'm most excited about is the municipal light plant one. Because of what it represents, right now we're under the thumb of charter, and I think it's almost, I would say on the East Hampton Facebook page, which I try not to go to too often, this is actually a point of agreement from, I think it's like, has the least disagreement, like, nobody likes charter, like, we can all unite and that. So, at a time of like vacuum of, you know, of market competition, of a time when the internet really is a standard utility now, this is something that people need to access information, to participate, you need internet. It's not an option anymore. So, I really like the spirit of, you know, getting out from under this mark, getting out from this corporate thumb that we're under and exploring other options that we can take control and tell them to go away nicely.
Okay, so we're moving into our audience questions. Laura, we're going to start with you. The Gazette ran an article saying that there is a natural gas moratorium. The mayor was unavailable for comment. How can we maintain growth like One Ferry and affordable housing without access to natural gas?
Well, I think the nature of that question is assuming that we have to rely on natural gas. You know, I think what we need to look for is different forms of energy to help with that. You know, we don't have control, we don't have control over the moratorium for natural gas. Again, that's a, that's a problem that's bigger than the solution East Hampton could offer. What we need to do is look for other ways to fuel our houses, look for other means of fueling our houses. I don't have any more of an answer than that.
No?
I think, you know, One Ferry Street, I know for a fact is actually using HVAC units on their roof, and they're not relying on the natural gas, which I think is fantastic. And even our new school, right? So the new school is going to be more efficient, and it's going to use less power, so we actually don't increase the usage. You know, I talked to our city planner, Jeff Bag, on this actually, pretty recently. And I think that if we look at the future, what options are there? And we're already looking outside the box and looking at future solutions to that. With the One Ferry Street, you know, they're already on board, they can't go natural gas, so they're looking at other options. And our school, I think we're in the right path as well. So to continue down that journey is the right, the right move, and how can we use sustainable energy within our confines? Thanks.
You?
That's a really interesting question, and I'd love to meet whoever came up with it. I don't, I don't have the solution to this. I think that it kind of falls into the green community discussion and using other sources for energy. And I think, I guess for me, I don't think it's a horrible thing that there's a moratorium on gas. I don't find it incredibly safe, so that doesn't really influence me one way or the other. But I do think that it opens up opportunities for us to explore other options, and I find that that's a good thing, and we can learn something from that and then use that throughout the rest of the community. So, like Laura, I don't have a lot of intel on this, and I don't, I don't think that I can give a lot of street cred on anything related to this. Those are my thoughts.
Yeah. You know, I question the moratorium and I, whether it's a political motivation to try to get more, support around getting more pipelines built, and that's something I'm definitely opposed to, is having more natural gas pipelines built. And so, it's kind of one of those things, when you can't have anymore, you have to look at the source of where it's coming from and really come face-to-face with, that it's part of a larger, you know, you have the natural gas in your house, it costs less, you feel better about that. There's pipelines and there's gas, and there's a lot more implications that are serious as a result. I think we really do, this is forcing us to look at renewable energy, we have to do that. I mean, that's where we're headed. I think new development should be required to use solar potentially and sustainable energy, and that's just, that's the climate crisis that we find ourselves in.
Ditto. No, yeah, I mean, the one thing I would add is, you know, thank God they have a moratorium, because their current infrastructure is a total mess. We have natural gas leaks all over the city, why would we want to expand the use of natural gas? We want more leaks and more potential danger to our residents. So fix that first, before we even talk about expanding their service. I do know it's a challenge to restaurants, new businesses, I've spoken to some, I know Casaro, when they wanted to come in, ran to an issue with the moratorium, and they were fortunately, I think, able to work out their meter. Also, Juggernaut Glass, who is going in over at Keystone, I know that was an issue for them too. So, it does present a challenge to some of our economic development, but I do agree, what do we want to, you know, something that's potentially dangerous and not necessarily good for our environment, you know, is that more important than a greener, a greener world, right? So, sometimes we make the decisions, and sometimes the decisions are made for us. And fortunately, in this case, the decision was made for us. So we have a better opportunity to look for solutions and look for alternative energies here, like everyone else has said. It puts us in a good situation. I mean, I have natural gas in my house now, my house before that, oil, oil was way more expensive, so I, you know, it's better on my pocketbook. But, you know, again, oil, propane, natural gas, it's all the same bag, you know? We need something cleaner, we need something better, and this gives us an opportunity to explore that.
Multi-use performance space is an expensive project. Is it a good project for our city and a good use of CPA funds? And Bill, we're going to start with you.
Yes, thank you. So I definitely think it's a good use of our CPA funds, I mean, that's what the CPA is there for. We actually own the building, so we need to make sure that the building is maintained. I definitely think that, you know, City Space is doing a fantastic job raising funds and raising money and holding events. I actually went to the ball and had a great time. I had a ball, if you will. But I think, you know, it's a staple in our community, I think we need to protect it, the city owns it. CPA funds were meant to preserve historic landmarks, and I think we definitely need to do it, and it's the right move. Thank you.
I agree. I think it's a great project. I think, I think cities historically need to maintain their past. And I think icons like the city hall have to remain in place. We've seen cities where they just start knocking down buildings that have huge historic influence just to make way for new ugly buildings and things that, you know, while, lack creativity and imagination. And I think this particular project is absolutely fabulous for the community. Like Bill said, I think they're doing a great job fundraising. I think the space itself will bring in new art-type activities, bands, and a new venue for entertainment. All of those things are part of our DNA and should be protected and should be enhanced. So I am all-in on the city hall, and I hope to have at least one seat with my, with a plaque on it when that, when that finally comes to resolution. But yeah, I think it's a great project, and for CPA funds, that is exactly what the definition of CPA funds are used for, is projects like that.
Lindsay?
I won't expand too much on what they already said, because I agree, I'm also in favor of the town hall, and think it's a good use of CPA funds. I think it again speaks to the values in our city. If you look back at the master plan and what people are saying now, futures and downtown strategic plan, maintaining our history is a key part of that value. And I, and also having a space where different, different people can come together and enjoy constructions of our city. So I think that embracing the town hall is totally aligned with where we are as a city.
Yeah, I'm super excited about this project. I think it's the perfect use of CPA funds, as everyone already said. For those of you who have not had the opportunity to look at the space, it's incredible. When completed, it's going to be the only space, or low.
When completed, it's gonna be the only space locally in the region, potentially Western Mass and beyond, that has unobstructed views for 350 or so people. It's really a fantastic space and I would echo what was already said about, you know, we're preserving our history, we're evolving how we use our historic buildings and not knocking them down. It follows the course of action with what we do at the mills. And, you know, the people who work for City Space are really good people, you know, this is community-based philanthropy and the way that they're fundraising is very thoughtful, they're not reaching out for big corporate dollars, they're trying to do it all within East Hampton and the region. You know, a brief story I would also share, I'm sure a lot of you are familiar with the lights up in the tower, and as a member of the Jewish community, I had another member of the community reach out to me and said, you know, we see all these lights at Christmas, can they at least put, can they put blue lights up in the tower? And I reached out, it was like, with no thought, absolutely, can you put blue lights out for Hanukkah? And that meant a lot to me. You know, I can't wait to see it finished, I'm hoping to be able to buy a chair as well. So yeah, it's really thrilling and it's a great project that I'm looking forward to seeing complete.
Great. This is a really simple answer, a simple question to answer for me as well. I think this is just a boon for this town. Again, CPA money is meant exactly for this and you want to, they see this money going towards a project that actually speaks to the heart of East Hampton. And I think this does, as well as the building being part of our history and just being able to create a space for more performances to happen, bring more people to our city. Think about the support it's going to do for those businesses, like Alex here right across the street from there. Just saying. But it is, we need to support our businesses in ways such as this and other businesses may come in because of it as well. You know, I think that this is a great thing for our city and I really look forward to attending events there and hopefully having a chair there as well.
Great, all right. Would you be supportive of the development and construction of city-owned public housing as opposed to privately-developed affordable housing? Example, 40B housing. And Peg, we're gonna start with you.
That's a tough one. I worry about cities, the city taking up a lot of time, energy and money to do our own planning and building of affordable housing. Admittedly, I have not run the numbers, so I can't, I can't tell you specifically if it's more advantageous to go with a developer or to do it as a city, but my belief is, just on the surface, is that having a developer do it would kind of relieve the city of that particular, having to deal with all of that. But certainly 40B, the chapter 40B, chapter 40B thing, I don't know what the word is, is important for inclusion housing and we need to make sure that that is available and that we enact it. And so, you know, for me, it doesn't feel right to have the city managing that, but I have not done enough research on it to really have a clear definitive answer on it. I know we need affordable housing and that's something that we'll just have to think about and look at.
Yeah, I tend to want to look for the people who are experts in doing things, who already have a method, like the CDC, Wayfinders, this other organization I met, and partnering with them to get affordable housing built here. It's said that I would be against using 40, I would have to learn more about it, I don't know about the 40B that much, but I do know that our budget is very constrained, that would add extra management and a whole other extra layer of infrastructure in our city. So like, my gut would say to partner with organizations that already do that well.
Agreed, we need to talk to the experts, this goes back to what I said earlier on, is that I don't really know enough about the mechanics around building affordable housing, which I support, to be able to determine which is a better option. This would certainly though, however, if the city were to do it, be a huge administrative burden on us and I think where this is potentially more successful is bigger cities where they're able to expand more people, we'd have to create a whole department to do this. Again, this is something I'd want to talk to our planner and our housing, various housing committees and departments about. It's certainly, the idea is again something I support, but I just don't know enough to build an answer which is more preferable.
Yeah, tough question. I mean, the first thing that came to mind when I heard that question was a question. And the question is, you know, are you in favor of increasing your taxes to support the living situation of others? Because I don't see any way that if the city were to do this, that it wouldn't somehow be impactful on all of us. And I'm not saying that that answers, that's a bad question to ask. I'm not saying that maybe the answer would be yes, I just don't know. And I also don't know enough about the funding that could help with that, but I do worry about having to have an entire department. Again, so we have to have a building manager, we have to maintain that building as well, you know, and it just, it's a lot. And again, all those people are being paid and it's gonna come from somewhere. So if we don't think about increasing our taxes to pay for this, that money's gonna come from somewhere then. We don't want it to come from the schools, we don't want it to come from our seniors, you know, it's a very tough thing. So I think that is more about putting request for proposals out, developing those Center Pepin and Maple schools and one of those request for proposals, having some affordable housing in there.
Thank you. The townhouse on Oliver Street, we actually own and it's affordable housing, it's low income. And there's a management company that actually runs it and oversees the maintenance and care of that. That company's name escapes me right now, but they also own other houses within the community that, there's a partnership with them. We've used CPA funds, because it's affordable housing, to help with some of the maintenance, looking at roofs, looking at different options and the, I think we just did something with vinyl siding on the townhouse or something. But we already have a partnership, so we also already have properties that we own that have structures on them. We can utilize CPA money to refurbish those houses and then have this partnership help manage the properties and open those doors up to folks. I think there are options out there that we can use with existing properties that we have and utilizing CPA funds to make it work with that partnership of that management company that can oversee it. They are the professionals that I think we need to utilize and they already have that partnership in there, so I would, you know, reach out to them and see what options we have there.
So we don't have enough time to do another full round of eight questions, so we're gonna move to closing statements, because I want to make sure that everybody has an opportunity to do that. And we're gonna reverse the order from opening, so we're going to start with you, Lindsey?
Okay. So I just want to acknowledge how difficult it is right now, watching what's going on in our federal government. And it's really nice to live in a community like this where people really care, where we can work together, where the municipal is nonpartisan and we can come together around common concerns. So this has been a really great process, I feel honored to have been part of it and meeting so many people along the way. I've dedicated my career to removing obstacles so that people can participate and that's what I would continue to do on the city council. Yes, we still have issues of equity in our community, we still have issues of bias, we still have issues of people not being included, but I really believe that there's a will here to make that better and to keep moving that needle forward and I would like to be part of that process. So I hope you'll consider voting for me on November 5th, number five on the ballot.
Are we going this way?
We are.
Okay. You're up. So thank you all for coming, this has been fun. I hope you feel like you know a little bit more about each of us as a result of this forum. I'm gonna kind of go in a different direction than a typical closing, I'm gonna leave you with this, that Teddy Roosevelt made a speech a long time ago, it's called "The Man in the Arena" and I'm not gonna read it, so relax. But I will paraphrase and essentially, he says that it's not the critic who counts, it's not the person who points out all the ways we've stumbled and it's not how they could have done this better. But the credit goes to the people who are in the arena, the people whose faces are marred by dust and sweat and blood, who make mistakes but continue to come back every time. Because at the best, we triumph, at the worst, we fail. But if we fail, we fail daring greatly and I want to dare greatly. And I am proud to be in the arena with these people right now and I think you're all brilliant and I wish you all the best of luck on November 5th, so thank you.
Thank you. I have to follow that. Comes back at you. I want to say thank you to everybody. I hope we answered some of your questions and you got to know a little bit more about us and our thoughts and ideas. I learned a lot more, you know, from our peers up here and, you know, I am open, I said it earlier, I'm a friendly guy, you can come talk to me, I'm available for questions and comments whenever. My phone number, 413-203-9821. I'd be more than happy to have a conversation. Did you get that? It's 413. But I want to, you know, thanks again to Mo and Jen and everybody else on East Hampton Media and I want to make a disclaimer that I am on the board of directors for East Hampton Media, it had nothing to do with this, as Peg noted earlier. I want to hope for your vote on November 5th, I would look forward to serving another term on the city council. Thank you.
Thank you again for coming tonight, on Friday night, to come and listen to all of us. I think, I'm really glad to be living in a city that we had this election and we have all spoken to each other during this time that we've all been running, offered help to each other, attended each other's events. I mean, I think that's a very unique thing, that really represents this very unique city that we live in. You know, like I said, we came here a long time ago and we had faith in this city. You know, we invested and when we opened the Apollo Grill, people told us we were crazy and they said, "Why are you opening in East Hampton?" And we said, "You just wait and see what happens to this city," because we knew North Hampton was reaching its peak. And so watching it happen over all these years has just been such a wonderful thing. You know, I feel almost like I've seen my kids growing up, grow up, at the same time I've seen East Hampton grow up, in some ways. So I have a great love for this city and I really feel that running for city, being on city council is a way for me to give back to the city. I think that what I do for a living and all the experience that I've had really makes me a strong candidate to be a good city councillor. As a nurse, what we do is assess, we gather data, we make a plan and we implement. Working in a hospital the size of Bay State Medical Center, half of my days are spent on committees, you know, sitting there and knowing the committee process very well, knowing what has to go into making decisions and being able to research things. You know, so again, I think that's made me a strong candidate for city council, so I hope that you vote for me on November 5th and I am one on the ballot. Thank you.
I'm four on the ballot, by the way. You know, this was really wonderful. You know, I think about a couple of years ago when I ran for my first term and looking around at the events we were having and other people's campaigns and really how much everyone worked together and seeing that happening again, you know, there's zero mudslinging or nastiness. We all have the same goals for the city, I think anyone here would do a fantastic job on city council and I'm very proud to be sitting up here with you. Thank you, East Hampton Media and Mo, and thank you all for coming. You know, I'm gonna teach you all a little bit of Yiddish, I did this two years ago, so if you learned it already, forgive me, but there's a word called nachas and it means overwhelming pride and, you know, that's what I use to describe my feelings for the city and I think my experiences last two years have only amplified that. I don't know if there's a superlative for nachas, but I have it. You know, there's amazing things going on here, councillor Coniff mentioned Food Truck Friday, Milk Pod Live, Cultural Chaos Art Walk, you know, we have these amazing icings on the cake that are East Hampton, but, and those things are great and delicious, but, you know, it's the cake that we gotta think about, right? We have to continue to think about what we're baking next for East Hampton and that includes the ingredients and the bakers and the temperature of the oven. And sometimes you get that all right and sometimes the cake falls and you have to go and mix it up altogether again, and maybe you break some eggs or you have too much, sorry, you have too much sugar. But we're doing it together, right? We're all doing it together. So whether, there's five of us up here and one of them's not getting elected on November 5th, I hope you vote for me, by the way, but the bottom line is, we're all here, we want to work together, we want to work with you and we see this as, we see this process as a way of, we're facilitating the voices of the people of East Hampton. And my role in that, I talk a lot about this, is I feel that I'm a connector. You know, a lot of people look at me and they think all I care about is myself, that I care about pulling you all together and making this work. So vote for me November 5th, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, I want to thank the, I'd like to thank the candidates for coming out tonight, thank you so very much for being here, I want to thank the audience for being here. And before I yield the microphone to Jen, where is she? There she is. Jen, I also want to thank East Hampton Media and Jen and her team for inviting me in the chamber to partner with them, I'm very proud to be a part of this community, I am a new member of the community, I've been here for four years, five years with the chamber and it gives me great joy every day. So Jen, if you'd like to close?
We're done.
We're done? Okay, we're out of here. [applause]